Okay, next item please.
Discussion items with a three-minute time limit. Graduation times, Dearborn High School, Dr. Glenn Malakow.
Mr. Martin has been very patient over there all day. I know, and I know he's got a...
You able to stand up?
We're working a few hours.
Exactly.
A little part of it, if you guys will just take care of it, you can do that.
Okay.
All right, we'll try to, we'll try to wrap. We've gotten all the information.
And I'll just mention, you know, the board has received the information. There were different proposals. And then there was a cer- Mr. Martin sent out a survey. I had asked him, you know, let's just make sure we have some data. And so, you know, there were different options that some of the parents had emailed us. And we, right now, we have a rotation of, you know, six o'clock Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which was changed, I think, several years ago when Brian Winston. And part of it was, we started to get away from the afternoon. I'm there anyway, so to me personally, it really does, I'll be there, and I know all of you will be there, so. But it was just some of the positives and the benefits, or the negatives to moving it. So, and I know it had to do with the senior party.
Yeah, so the, the senior party, for those of you who do not know, the senior parents put on quite an impressive event, the night of commencement for all of our, our students. The origination, I'm told, is to provide students a safe place, so that way they can celebrate with their friends one last time before they go. Generally, the all-night party starts around 9:30 or 10:00, and goes until 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. Students have the ability to do a ton of different things. There's food there. And I will tell you, it's more than just a, hey, this is a one-time deal. Ninth grade parents are, ninth grade parents of this year are already fundraising in preparation for what's going to be four years from now. So, I, I would be remiss if we didn't at least consider the opportunity or the ability to alter the date to try to hold true to the tradition that has been at Dearborn High School with having senior party the day of commencement. I know the parents have asked for consideration, and that's what the survey was asking as well. I'm in support of it. I, I think it's a great opportunity for our students. My concern about doing, so with commencement being on Friday night, it's going to be almost impossible for the parents to set up in a two-hour window when students leave. And I would say, I don't know that that's super fair to the parents who also want to separate, celebrate with their children either, to be hustling around before commencement. Moving it does give them more time to prepare. They set up in the cafeteria, they set up in the gyms, they set up in the hallways. There's 50-plus parents there that are running it. They have, they're, they take care of the parking lot. I mean, it's an incredible scene. I would love to be able to provide our students and the parents the ability to do that in, in a way that has been consistent with what the Dearborn High School tradition has been.
All right, people, yes.
Did everyone see this too?
Yep.
Oh, we need to extend the meeting.
Put a motion on the table, extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Support?
Roll call.
Michael Mead.
Yeah.
Roxanne McDonald.
Yes.
Usain Barry.
Yes.
Adam Mosip.
Yes.
Mary Lane. Jim Thorpe, yes. Mary Pellicoff. Do we have, what's the record for extensions?
We don't want to talk about it. We don't want to.
He may have broken that record.
It's been, yeah, it's been midnight past midnight. We're going to be out of here soon.
Several, several parents from Dearborn High have reached out to at least a few of us. I don't know if, if all of us were included. There's been so many different emails. They did incredibly constructively coming to us and explaining exactly what the situation is and the problems, the way this is currently set up with the Friday night graduation, and giving us a few options for us to consider. It is a special thing for these students. It does make sense that we give them the opportunity. And if it means that we have to rearrange our schedules a little bit, I'm open to it. But from the district's standpoint, Dr. Malakow, is this a big concern if we move this graduation ceremony? Wouldn't it interfere with the other two?
So, we can't, the one thing I say we can't do is there was one suggestion to move it a week earlier. That's not possible. We can't do that. That's too soon because of all the finalization of transfer groups and everything.
And that's the June 6th, just on the same page?
Oh, no, the week before. They had another suggestion.
May, something.
May, the end of May. That we can't do. The other ones we can do. The reason that, and again, I'm, you know, I wasn't the superintendent at the time, but I know I was on cabinet. And the reason that we stopped doing the afternoon Saturday was because of the potential for the direct heat. So, we can do it, but there were also complaints because even that little, you know, the six o'clock, you know, if you're at Dearborn High, and again, I know, and most of us know, because you kind of get that shade. Whereas at two o'clock, you know, the students are kind of, everybody's cooking in the sun, potentially, if you get a very hot day. So, that's why we, we removed. The only other, the last time we did a two o'clock afternoon was actually inside at the, the U of M Field. It was two o'clock or noon. I can't remember exactly. But it was at the, I was HR at the time. It was at the Field House. So, that's the only down to that one. I personally don't, you know, the other one, if you were to move it to the Thursday, I don't see any issue personally, other than it's not connected to the other two. We did survey the students as well, just to get their input, and because of some, it was said that they might not like it if it wasn't on the same day. But they actually, their survey results show 45, and it went to parents, I think, Adam?
It went to parents and students.
And students. So, they actually preferred to do the, based on the survey, it was 100 and something response, 170, 60.
69.
69. So, anyway, that's the data that we have from them.
They prefer to do it on the, on to...
The survey said, keep it on Friday, but then do the senior party the next day.
On Saturday.
But that was one of the...
But it doesn't bother me.
All the individual options. There was two options about moving it. And if you add the two that wanted to move it together, they would have had a slight majority.
No.
But you're not dealing with a big...
It was 25%, I think, right?
Yeah, 25%.
No, but I'm saying that the, if you take the option to move it to earlier Saturday versus Thursday?
The Thursday, then it's a, yeah, so it's about, it's a wash.
Oh, if you're saying if you want to move it, I see what you're saying.
Right. 20, 20 would be 49%.
We have time. We could take the, the top two and do it again and just eliminate.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Because it's not like we have to decide today.
Right.
We could actually take those top two and then set, just like we've done.
And send those two out.
And then send the top two out, and then you'll know for sure.
Which, which do you prefer?
Yep.
Now, the only thing I do want to say, though, because I, I always have this issue about once we make an exception, is that I don't want to have every year somebody raising their hand saying, I, I want, I want a, you know, an exception made again.
So, President Peschakoff, can I interject?
Yes, you can.
So, I knew this was going to happen last year because Mr. Casebolt's parent group wanted to throw a, a senior party in-house. So, I recognized that there was going to be a conflict just based on the timing of it. So, what I would tell you is, if Edsel Ford and their parents are wanting to do that for their students, and Dearborn High and their parents are going to want to do that for the students, this is going to be a yearly, yearly issue. So, my suggestion is, we solve it for this year, and then have some conversations as we're building our calendar dates for next year in terms of how are we going to make this work for both Edsel and Dearborn High and the parents and the students.
Well, it's just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah.
Well, and someone had said with Edsel too, the reason, because they do theirs off-site. It's not in the school.
So, my understanding is this year, they're trying to do it at Edsel.
Oh.
When I spoke with Mr. Casebolt.
That's what I'm saying. Once you start this, you open that door for everybody to then say, you know, me too, me too.
And last year, we actually did jump the rotation.
Yeah, we understood that, yeah.
Fordson chose to, well, allowed us to take their Saturday to make it work, so.
Trustee Barry?
I love surveys, but here it says there was 169 people that responded. Now, we all know there isn't going to be 169 people setting up for this party and working it. So, most of those people have probably had, hey, we don't want to change it because we reset the date. It was probably, it is the people that work on this.
Yep.
And they know the ins and outs, and they've done this before, and they're probably the same people at the Booster Club. There's football games, volleyball games. So, they know what they're talking about. I would love to see graduation and the party the same night. Number one reason is safety reasons. We know what happens with kids, with these young people. They get in their cars and start driving around. So, I don't know how you want to handle that, but it sounds like Thursday, June 11th might work?
It could.
Do you want to, before we make a commitment, do you want to check on?
If, if you wanted to move it, that would be my recommendation of the options.
Versus doing two on Saturday.
Two on Saturday, yeah.
Because of the potential and the complaints we had before with, you know, people potentially cooking in the sun. And again, it might be a day where it's overcast, and it might be the day where you were calling me with rain.
I'm sorry, but Michigan's weather is on.
Of all of those, I would, I would go with C too. But I still, I still just want to, want to caution everybody because on, once you have every, some other parties interjecting into the, then we're going to have to have this conversation. And what negotiate every year for?
But you know what? I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. I'm just bringing that up there.
I mean, if it's...
If we're making it better for the graduating seniors.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it out there so that, because you have to plan ahead for when, when these dates are set.
You said move them both, C?
No, I'm saying...
You want to go?
I have a question about two graduations on Saturday. What times would they be?
I, I think we're not going to be doing that.
Okay, because there's a lot of the video equipment to move between the two, so.
Yeah, that makes, that, that's a legit, that's a legitimate concern of trying to move from one place to another. Okay. He came out just for that.
What do you need from us tonight, I guess?
I mean, we, you could, we could decide tonight, or we could not if we wanted more data. I mean, I'm, I'm open to the pleasure of the board.
Are we sure that there's nothing planned that Thursday?
It's the last day of school.
It's the last day of the school. It's in a half-day, right?
And they used to be, years ago, they, they used to be...
The Thursday.
Kids get out at 10:30, and that's how it was.
Before. That's why it was never an issue because in years past, we used to have graduation a week later. But remember when we changed the senior release date? So, because there was a half-day, the parents never had an issue set up. So, that's why it wasn't an issue for the parents.
Yeah.
It's fine by me.
If you want to make, does somebody want to make a motion?
Unless, unless there's, I mean, unless there's a reason not to, and I'll put a motion on the table to move commencements to Thursday, June 11th.
Support.
For Dearborn High.
For Dearborn High. Okay, we've got a motion and a support. You got the motion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, the motion passes. You can go back and tell your parents to...
On behalf of them, the students, and myself, thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
He's got a little visibility in a few hours.
And you could tell them that you, you could tell them that it got approved at 5:00 to 11:00.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Yeah, because we're going to have to have another one. Okay, next, please.
Board of Education Business acknowledges of Correspondents.
I think we've talked about all the correspondence.
And all that, we'll see.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Trustee Lane?
Finance Committee met, which was Trustee Barry, Trustee Mead, and myself. We had four agenda items. First, and perhaps the most important, is a clean audit. So, we will be having that next month, but for everyone, I'd just like to say that it looks like the audit is perfectly clean. Congratulations to Mr. Wall and his department.
I wonder why he won an award.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a huge budget, and it's, it's a really big deal to have a clean, clean audit. The second is GASB 84, which is a federal accounting regulation, and is now changing the accounting of funds. We have 811 funds that are valued at 1.1 million. They're primarily small accounts, but they have to be recorded and audited separately. So, Mr. Wall, you can help me with that.
These are the fiduciary accounts, so they have to be treated separately now if this district oversees the funds or have control on how those funds are spent, which a lot of them may have that capability. So, now they have to be recorded in the general fund or special revenue funds versus the student activity accounts it was in previously, which means it's hold to a higher standard of processing those expenses and what they can and cannot do with the money. So, it's going to be a transition for us.
Yeah, which leads into our next discussion, which was, these accounts can be as little as $100, and it will mean a lot of accounting and a lot of administrative burden and bureaucratic burden for the finance department. So, there was a quick discussion amongst the three of us in raise, to raise the amount of what is a nominal level at the board. So, that will require board action. Right now, it looks as if what we, what the consensus was, was $2,500, from $100 to $2,500. And the reason, I mean, it's a big jump. It was pointed out that the jump is really large percentage-wise, and people might question that, but honestly, $100 doesn't buy very much anymore. So, accounting for it is kind of pointless. So, then there was also a discussion on the roofing and paving contracts. There was a discussion, if the bond passes, we still, every year, do roofing and paving. So, there was a discussion of how that would interface if the bond is passed. But we will proceed now on, starting to prepare for next summer's roofing and paving. And then finally, there is a form, which I'm not really remembering if this is, I think, county level. It's a tax mileage rate form, L 4029. And Mr. Wall has proposed, ingeniously proposed a scribner change to account for Dearborn Heights and Dearborn's rate so that it doesn't require...
Right. In the past, we have done one form for both cities, and the form gets very messy and confusing, especially outside of Dearborn. The county has to kind of interpret it. And they actually use scanning it into the system, which causes errors because it's got too many numbers on it. So, they're proposing just to break it up between one for the city of Dearborn and one for the Dearborn Heights, because the city of Dearborn does 100% summer levy, and Dearborn Heights does a 50% summer, 50% winter, and that's what's causing the confusion.
Okay.
So, instead of just seeing one form, you'll see two forms with the same data on it. But it'll, it'll kind of help the county along, and it's clear for us.
It's a bookkeeping kind of, uh...
Okay.
That was it. All right. Do we want to?
No, we got two minutes.
I got something I got.
Oh, then we're going to extend it.
I'll put a motion to extend the meeting another 15 minutes.
I second.
Michael Mead.
Yeah.
Roxanne McDonald.
Yes.
Usain Barry. Adam Mosip.
Yes.
Mary Lane. Jim Thorpe, yes.
Yes.
Mary Pellicoff.
That's what I'm voting, yes.
Yes, I said yes.
All right. Are there any other committee reports? Okay, I just wanted to add to the committee report thing because last month, I was asked about an ad hoc committee for the review request for information that Trustee Lane suggested and Trustee Barry did. So, because they both suggested it.
They're on the committee.
They're on the committee, along with myself. I, I put myself on there too. You request, you get. So, I doubt that we'll have, we'll meet very often, that we, we have to call that into question. And then the other that I wanted to bring up, and this goes for the Policy Committee. I know that you're already have started looking into that we have a way to have an onboarding for new trustees. And that I think we need to get more serious about putting something in our policies or guidelines or something in our bylaws. So, especially because I, and I'm going to send everybody a link to an article that Wayne State University got slapped on the hand so far by the Higher Learning Commission because they didn't have some code of conduct, and some of their board members were acting out of order. And a complaint was lodged, and, and the Higher Learning Commission could potentially, you know, pull their accreditation for this ban. And they, and they said, quite frankly, if multiple trustees act on their own agendas outside of board deliberations, those actions are openly not unified in support of the leadership, while possibly unintentional. This could ultimately create distractions that hurt students. Now, this is for the college, but we're a P 14 district, so whatever we decide to do at the P 12 translates over to the college as well, so.
In the policy.
In the policy. So, what we really, and they said that one of the problems was, was that they didn't have a code of conduct, ongoing training, and so forth. So, I think we need to consider moving forward with that on the Policy Committee sooner rather than later. So, I want that looked into to make sure that we have all board members, especially since next year is going to be an election year with four seats up. We could have potentially, quite frankly, four whole brand-new board members who don't understand the role. And we have to have something more formalized in order to help them. So, I, I would like the Policy Committee to take that up with a more critical eye.
Will you follow those meetings at Wayne State?
Pardon? No.
There were some exciting ones.
I, well, I read, I did read, I did read the one where they, where they were going to fire, yeah, I, I've read some of them. And so, I knew they were having issues. All right, so I'm done. Is there any, yes?
I noticed that we have a proposal for the agenda policy, and I read over it. I just wanted to suggest that where it says that P 12 and the college could put things on each other's agenda, I, we, we know that. But I would just like to have the Policy Committee consider that it's not favored. I mean, each should control pretty much its own agenda, so.
I had planned on adding a little language to that.
Thank you.
The same type.
Okay.
Are we in commentary?
No, not yet.
No, not yet. Okay. Are there any other committee reports? Okay. Next item, please.
Board Member and Superintendent Condamitary.
Okay. Trustee Mosip, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, exciting, yeah. Actually, mentoring program at Edsel Ford is underway. And obviously, there are, I'm, I'm really happy to see mentoring programs pop up at other schools. And this is amazing initiatives, and I was approached by a counselor in a, in elementary to give her some of the feedback about the mentoring program that AYSB, the nonprofit, is doing at Edsel Ford in coordination with Edsel Ford High School. So, mentoring is a great way of lending a hand from the community to the students and for the students to explore careers and to know more about the outside world. So, we meet once a month from 7:30 to 8:30, and we meet at the cafeteria at Edsel Ford. If you're interested, you can visit the AYSB Facebook page or Instagram page or their website, where they have the form for you to be a mentor, and then they do all kinds of background checks to be a mentor. So, really excited. One thing that I, I'd like to mention, and I, I want to put that for request for information because I'd like to learn more about the gymnastics. And obviously, we've been asked about the gymnast, gymnastics program being cut. If, if other outside budget or grants were looked at before we cut that program. So, that's kind of out of order, but I appreciate the parents who came and passionately spoke about this. I never gave up. So, thank them.
Okay, let's go around this way. Trustee Thorpe?
Again, back to what we were just talking about with the training for the board. There is legislation, I believe, in the House right now about mandatory training. So, it is something that we're seeing throughout the state, that there is a need to make sure that people are doing it. And, Trustee Mosip, you mentioned the certification.
Right.
I would, I don't think every single section that they, that's currently, it would be part of it. But going through all the first-level CBA classes definitely takes care of it.
Okay. Who, Trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to smoke on the grill. It was a fabulous event. The weather was great. Everyone had a good time. And we set records, not only for attendance, but for fundraising. So, thank you, everyone.
That's awesome.
And congratulations to everyone who won. There was a lot of prize given up. And the big winner was sitting to my left.
What'd you get?
I won nothing.
You get a furnace?
He won a lot.
I could have used the air conditioner.
He's taking me fishing.
Doctor Mead?
I just want to indicate how happy I am that the Strategic Planning Committee with Farage.
Fatme, Fatme.
Fatme Farage did, that's a really good piece of work. It's really crystal clear what the goals are. They're measurable, and they're achievable. And people are assigned the responsibility to meet these goals. So, I'm, I'm just very happy with that because, as you know, as board members, the strategic plan that we approve is gives direction to the administration about what to do. So, in, in the future, I would request, and I hope everybody else would, that when people come to make reports to us, that they relate it to the strategic plan, that they say that this is what, I'm reporting on this, and it's related to the strategic plan because that's the guide. So, we're, you know, selecting the superintendent, dealing with fiduciary responsibilities, and developing policy is really our major responsibilities. And I just can't say enough about how good that committee did, how well that committee did. What, there's 30 people on it or something?
I think there was even more.
All right, so they just did a really wonderful job of giving us
60, maybe.
a guide path of, of what this district is, is going to achieve in the future. So, thank you, Superintendent, and I'm sorry for that Fatme was not here, but...
Yeah, she's at the Superintendent Academy Training, and I actually present tomorrow at that training. I've done it annually, so she made sure, making sure that I'll be there, and that's, so that's why she's not here.
Share that comment with her.
With what?
Share the comment with her.
Yeah, I will. I will tomorrow when I see her, for sure. So, we've encouraged all of our executives to go through that training, so she, you know, last year, we encouraged her as well.
Yes.
I'm very excited that this meeting's almost over.
Well, I, I do, what, I do...
You have time to say that?
Well, I know my son, if I can. Okay, because I, I have one thing I would like to say too, so I'll let you, let you go ahead here.
I know my son is asleep right now, but he wanted me to mention the Supriano Run. It was, it was raining. It was soggy everywhere at the park, but those students kept on going. And it was just amazing. And the organizers did a phenomenal job despite the rain to have that tournament, which was really fun. So, Omar, you did not make it this time, but I'm pretty sure next time you might, if you do your own practice, you're going to make it top 10. So, congratulations to all the winners and everybody who participated. It was, it was a lively day, and the sun came out at the end, but, finally. Thank you.
I just wanted to say really quickly, I want to remind everybody, because we've had a lot of email conversations going on of late, and that sometimes it seems like one board member or another might get a preponderance of the emails. So, I'm going to kind of speak to the audience now because we don't have a lot of parents hanging here anymore. A, as board members, I would like you to encourage, when people reach out to you, that they reach out to all of us. We are a collective board. We only have authority acting together, and you have one board member who's collecting a lot of emails. The response might not be the same. You want to make sure that we're all kept informed. You'll get the best decisions, the best responses if we all are in on the conversation and know what's happening. And sometimes those things can fall through the cracks if only one or two board members are seeing the emails. So, I want all of us to be cognizant of that fact, and I want the parents out there to understand that we are accessible through the Dearborn Schools website. And please, if you've got an issue or a concern, email all of us collectively rather than just one person because that way you can be assured that we have all of our eyes focused on the issue instead of somebody, or one or two or a couple getting it. And it gets filtered back to us a little more quickly if we're all getting the same information. Yes?
Can I mention, in the MASB Law Workshop, they mentioned about the Open Meeting Act, and they actually went deep in it. And I think everybody now is very well aware of it. But they did say email, when discussing business, an email, it's, that could be a violation.
No, not to have somebody contact us.
Right, right. I, I know. They can contact us, but for us to respond to that person...
That's why only the board president responds.
Exactly. So, I, I just wanted to make that clear, and that's why sometimes you do not see me. I only respond to you, Madam President, or I respond only to one. So, we, we have to be cognizant of that, I'm very, of, of that law, that we cannot discuss business.
No, we don't start conversation back and forth.
Yeah, we don't start a conversation in an email trail that may put us liable.
We all need to have the same information shared.
Right, absolutely.
Quite frankly, it's under Board Member Ethics in, in our policy manual, in our bylaws. And it talks about, seek systematic communications between the board and student, staff, and all elements of the community. And there's another part on here as well. So, if you re, if everybody refreshes their mind, looks under the bylaws for Board Member Ethics, it incorporates the fact that, to make sure that we're, we're all part of the communication and that it's not, we're not missing people in part of it. Because then, then we have to spend... then we have to spend time going through, seeing who did, who did get the communication, who didn't get the communication, kind of thing. It's best that everybody tries to share that all at one time, so that we're all on the same page at one time.
Absolutely.
Okay, yes.
Quickly, and with that too, you guys know that I'm always put, like, if one board member were to contact me early in the week with something, I might respond to them or somebody else, but then I always put it in so that everybody gets the information.
In board groups.
And that's some of the things that we were trained in the Superintendent Academy, for example, to do that. So we'll continue to do that. I just want to mention that I am going to miss the next board meeting, it'll be the first time I've missed the meeting in my fifth year as superintendent, but it's for a positive, and it's been in board briefs, but I got permission from President Pellicoff because it's my last duty as the outgoing superintendent of the year to go to Washington with all the other superintendents, and then it is really good because it just turns out that it's literally the next day is the Lindbergh Blue Ribbon, so it's actually saving a trip, and AAS is paying for my, my, to go up there.